Good evening. It's seven o'clock and it's Monday, February 9th, 2015. The regular meeting of the Board of Education is now called to order. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, appreciate you being here this evening, all of you, on this particularly cold night. And it speaks well for your interest in education. We do appreciate that. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. We have a couple of kids to help us out. It's been the tradition at Wayne Westland for the past thirty-plus years that we have students from the elementary school lead us in the pledge. And tonight is no different. We have two students from Schweitzer. They are, and I just, so I don't get it wrong, is Tricia and Caleb. Would you come down and get us started, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, to the invisible, but liberty chooses for all.
I believe, Mrs. Meddell, you have a biography for these students?
Yes, I do. And I think I'm going to start with Caleb, because I usually start with ladies first. And I think I'll start with our gentlemen first tonight. My name is Caleb Jovanovic. I like sports. I like playing baseball and basketball. I love going to school. My favorite subject in school is gym. When I was five years old, I dreamed of playing Major League Baseball. I started playing baseball at seven years old, and I have been playing ever since. I live with my mother, father, brother, and two sisters.
My name is Tricia Tron. I am in Mrs. Brown's 4th grade class at Schweitzer Elementary School. My favorite things are food, french fries; drink, Dr. Pepper; hobby, play Minecraft; place, Dave and Buster's. I live with my mom, dad, little sister Katie, and baby sister Maya. When I grow up, I want to be a scientist and help homeless people. Very good.
Very good. Thank you. And we have a little something for each of you. Dr. Weaver is going to bring it down to you now.
You guys are nervous, are you? Okay? You're not? Good. All right. Well, we have this award of recognition for you for leading us in the pledge tonight. But before we do that, Tricia, who did you bring with you tonight?
Tonight, I brought my Aunt Lily, my little sister Katie, and my baby sister Maya, and my aunt's friend Lily.
Let's recognize them. Caleb, one question I have of you. Did you get your homework done before you left the house?
Yes.
Wow. I love it. Good job. Who'd you bring with you?
I brought my mom and my principal, Ms. Chambers.
All right. Where are you, folks? Well, we have this recognition for both of you. To Caleb Jovanovic and to Tricia Tron for participation in our flag ceremony, suitable for framing for your wall. How's that? Thank you for leading us tonight.
Could you hold on one minute? We'll get your pictures. If you'll come back right to the center, we'll get a picture of each of you.
Come on, guys.
Mrs. Meddell?
Mr. Griffin is excused this evening. Mrs. Walker?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Madison?
Present.
I'm here. And Mr. Buckaloo?
I'm present, thank you.
Very good.
Item 216.15, recognitions, presentations. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, we are going to start with Steve K., our principal, from our William D. Ford Career and Technical Education Center.
I'd like to thank Dr. Harmala, Mr. Albrecht, and the Board of Education for allowing me to recognize four outstanding students from the William D. Ford Career Technical Center here this evening. Thank you also for your ongoing support of the Career Technical Center. Without this support, the following awards and achievements would not be possible. From our graphic design department tonight, we have teaching assistant Liz Ritter. Liz, you want to... And also our instructor, Mr. Steve Paulson. And Steve, stay standing. You're not getting off that easy. Instructor Mr. Paulson has once again instructed and guided four students to greatness. Mr. Paulson, your effort and instructional strategies continue to produce highly talented, career-ready students. Thank you, Steve. The North American International Auto Show 2015 poster contest. In this contest, this contest was established to engage creative minds of Michigan's future artists. The 27th Annual Contest recognizes students from throughout the state. The 2015 contest had 58 high schools involved and 781 student poster entries encompassing an automotive theme. Sixteen students total were selected for awards. I'm proud to say, of the sixteen posters selected, the Wayne Westland Community Schools and the William D. Ford Career Technical Center students were awarded four of these sixteen awards. Stated differently, 25% of the total 2015 North American International Auto Show poster contest awards were won by our career technical students. And they're here tonight. Four students and their families are all with us tonight so that we can recognize them. The first one, Veronica Peterson, designer, Best of Show in Digital. Jasmine Traxler, first place, 12th grade. Kyle Wilkin, second place, 12th grade. And Jada Baskin, third place, 12th grade. We swept the 12th grade category. These were all the awards for 12th graders. So excellent job to them. And Mr. Paulson, if you wouldn't mind, just a few moments and make a comment on each of their posters.
Yeah, I'll start with Jada.
I think in order to pick you up on the recording, we need you at the mic.
Yes. I'll start with Jada here. Jada's piece was, we decided to do something different with the logo, because it's really, it's really the centerpiece of the North American International Auto Show. And normally, it's just presented as a flat logo. And we basically split it up, added some nice color palette, and put a little three-dimensional bevel on that. And it turned out really nice, so good job on that. Kyle's was created in Adobe Illustrator. And I don't know if you can tell, but this is more of a vector-based design. Really strong color palette, as well as composition. I think they really enjoy that. And Kyle's actually using this piece for Society of Automotive Engineer poster that we're working on right now, too. And very nice job on that, Kyle. Jasmine's is really, I love the color palette on this. Beautiful. And Jasmine is a first-year student, so she has gone above and beyond. She is, you know, working on the basic skills that we start out with. And I saw that she was very, very, you know, advanced in those areas. So I said, "Well, hey, you want to do the poster?" And she said, jumped right in and said, "Yeah." And I was really glad that you won that, so great, great job. Veronica, Veronica's won last year. She's won this year. Just, I can't say enough about her. Hopefully, she'll be going to CCS or Kendall College of Art and Design this fall. We're really working on that. But compositionally, this was, this circular idea, because there are so many things about, you know, automobiles, the steering wheel, the tires, the wheels, all these circular gears and things like that. So that was the general idea behind the piece. And it just, it turned out great, I thought. Nice color palette. They almost missed this. I talked to Sandy Herp, who works for Detroit Auto Dealers, and they just caught this at the last minute, or they would have overlooked it. And they said, they saw that and said, "This is it. How did we miss it?" And great job. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, students. We'll give you a minute to move out of the way. And we're going to ask Larry Futrell from the Westland...
Dr. Harmala?
Yes?
We have a presentation we'd like to do.
Oh, great. Thank you. I missed that part. Don't leave, students.
Mr. K., could I ask your four students to come down to the floor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The thought process that goes into them is tremendous. I think probably more important than the artwork itself, although they're awfully nice to look at. You folks have done a wonderful job. These are certificates from the Board of Education to each of you, recognizing our thanks for the way you represent Wayne Westland Schools. And each tries to identify the award and the place that you took. I have to say that this is getting to be kind of like an annual event. You show up each year with all of these first-place and high-placing posters, and you make us all proud. You truly do. This one is for Jasmine. And Veronica? Kyle? And Jada. And again, thank you very, very much.
Okay. We'll give President Buckaloo a second. And now we'll move to the Westland Goodfellows, who also want to provide a recognition. And thank you, Larry Futrell, for representing them.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Larry Futrell. I'm with the Westland Goodfellows. I've been working with them for a long time. And we have some thanks to give for some people and departments that worked with us last year with the Westland Goodfellows. Last year, we had 784 children that we helped during the Christmas period. And we couldn't do it without all the help that we get from a lot of other people. And tonight, we're going to recognize three of the departments that helped us a lot during last year. First of all, the Department of Transportation, the director, Sherice Rourke, and dispatcher, Jeff Allen. Jeff usually dresses up as Santa, but I guess he didn't last year, but he lost his Santa suit. But they do the Stuff the Bus program for us. So they got three buses full of various toys, coats, food, and you name it. It all went into the buses, and they brought it over to us at the Friendship Center on the day that we distributed everything. So it was greatly appreciated, and I know the kids appreciated it. And this is the certificate that I'd like to present to Jeff and Sherice. They're going to help me now do the rest of these.
Yes, I've been involved with Stuff the Bus. This was our eighth annual. And most of yous I see there, and I really appreciate it. We love to help the kids in our community. That's what we're about. And we love to help the Goodfellows. So thank you for being, working together with us. We've had a really good year again this year. Thank you.
But anyway, the next group is the John Glenn's Honor Society. The World Language Department teacher and Honor Society sponsor, Alyssa Koopa. And members of the John Glenn Honor Society helped a toy drive for our program and delivered several bags of new unwrapped toys for us to deliver to the kids this year. So we want to thank them, because everybody helps. We can't do it all. We have a little core, small core group with quite a few volunteers. And people like Alyssa Koopa. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, just to keep it in mind. I want to thank the Goodfellows for having us here tonight, and also to acknowledge the four officers that we have this year, and just acknowledge their hard work that they put in this past holiday season. They're a great group. And I just want to introduce our president, Michael Tadejewski, on the far left, Vice President Lindsay House, Secretary Noah Southern, and Treasurer John Race, who donated a lot of toys just on their own these four, and helped pack and transport. And I'm just really thankful to have them, and we're really happy to lend our support to you as well. So, yeah. Thank you.
We can't thank everybody enough for helping. And our last group, again, is the Health Occupation Students of America from Ford Career Technical Center, and along with their teacher, Ruth Ann Petries. And the members of their group helped a bowling fundraiser. And this year, they adopted nineteen children from four different families. And it applied to our program. And we had the families get Christmas gift lists, wish lists, and they took the wish list and bought toys for the kids. And I have talked to several of the families that are the recipients of the Adopt a Family program. And it really is really nice to have one family deliver toys to the door of another family. More special than what we do, I think. So tonight, we have to Ruth Ann Petries. We have this here. If you'd like to say something. We have a lot of people here.
Yeah. Jalen Fisher is our HOSA president, so I'm going to have her take this back and share it with the rest of the students in HOSA. I have, of course, Jalen, and then Lulu Askevius, where are you? Summer Madison, Riley Strong, Clarissa Ross, Danielle Robinson, and Chelsea Gilbert. They're one of the 200 students that are involved in HOSA. Every year, we try and adopt families. We've done this for about ten years now. So this year, we did our Skate-a-thon and raised over $2,000 so that we could support the families in our community. And we've done this for quite some time now. And I'm very proud to say that our families were, you know, tearful when they received all the gifts that they got for their children. So I have to thank my students for being so supportive of our community. Thank you.
Again, that concludes what we wanted to present. And again, we want to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to present these tonight and recognize these fine people amongst their peers. Thank you very much.
Our honorees tonight really do us great. You make us proud. You truly do. You represent our district so well, we couldn't be more pleased. And you're all welcome to stay. There's nothing quite like a board meeting. It's just a world of fun. But if you have studying to do, or maybe that sock drawer needs sorting, and you'd like to move on out, we'll give you a minute to do that. Thank you again very, very much for what you do for Wayne Westland. Agenda items only. Mrs. Meddell?
I do not have any requests.
Do we have any citizen comments tonight? Addenda items only. Seeing done, we're going to move forward. Item 218.15, consent agenda.
I move, I move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Support.
I think I heard Mrs. Walker and Dr. Weaver. Any comment? Any discussion?
I'd only like to make a comment of thanks to everybody who has donated, not only this month, but in previous months, to our school district. Believe it or not, we cannot make it without our donations. We truly appreciate everybody who has donated and will donate in the future.
Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin is excused. Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes. Make that a six oh vote. Move on to item 219.15, presentation, awareness of Tinkham Alternative Redesign. Mr. Albrecht?
Got to get some people up here with me, so hang on a minute.
No problem.
I get to do all the talking. But before I go into this presentation, this has really been a truly collaborative effort. And I want to introduce some key members of this team that has got this presentation together. Dana Dolzow, if you just kind of wave so they know who you are. Ann Chambers, Ken Vanderwerp, Diane Fournier, Patricia Bradley, Kelly Hayes, Yvette Johnamore, and the director, Kim Doeman. Now, why we needed this group? First of all, let me tell you that their greatest skill of all is their willingness and ability to make connections with kids. And that was first and foremost in us coming together. Second, along with that, is their willingness to serve our community. So with those kinds of things said, I'm going to go into the presentation, and you have a copy. This is all about board awareness tonight. I'm not asking you to vote on anything. It's basically to keep you up to date on the work that we're doing. So what and why? What are we here for, and what are we going to talk about? First of all, our district has some significantly limited resources in order to run the programming that we have. We've talked about it month after month after month at our meetings. Last spring, we came together in the Ed Services Department, somewhat concerned because 31A at-risk money was starting to decrease, and we had to make some very difficult decisions. And I'll talk about those later. So why? Approximately 18% of our students who reach the age of 16 opt to leave traditional programming. Can Tinkham be redesigned to meet the needs of those pupils? And that's why this group of people is so important. If the answer to that is yes, then what can we do about it? A little bit about Tinkham's alternative funding issues. The total cost of running that program is over budget, $654,000. I went too far. The operating costs exceed the general fund revenue for the program, and specifically, that means the per-pupil funding for the number of students there is not enough to keep the program going. So at-risk 31A money has been used to offset some of that deficit. The district general fund balance has been covering it for several years. The cost per pupil. Our foundation allowance is signified by the blue bar as $7,251 per child. Our foundation allowance with at-risk money is $7,575. The alternative funding per child is $18,476 a year. Current class sizes are contributing factors. They average about fifteen students per class. The current program size is sixty students. It may fluctuate a little bit more than that or a little bit less, but sixty is what we try to hold it at. And the program design staff is thirteen-plus. So what? For several years, at-risk funding has quite simply been at-risk. The state has talked about it over time. Last year, the state spread those dollars over even more schools, giving it to charter schools. And when we were faced with that, we had to make some tough decisions. There's a graph of just the last two years. We've lost $500,000 district-wide in at-risk funding for our students. If you take a look at this graph, you'll see that this is how we spend at-risk money. Two percent of our money goes to summer, summer school credit recovery program. Ten percent of our money goes toward English language learners. Forty-one percent goes toward social workers district-wide. We have tech interventionists that are helping our teachers and students use the technology that we have in classrooms. Our middle school security uses two percent of that funds. Secondary support, that's middle school and high school, is nineteen percent. Tinkham gets twenty-three percent of our at-risk money. Right-hand side, you'll notice that all of those things are listed, but at the very bottom, there are three that have zero percent next to them. GenNet was an online program that we ran up till last year, and that was one of those things when our at-risk money went down last year that had to be, a tough decision was made. K-4 class size reduction teachers were eliminated this year because of that loss, as well as elementary paraproses. A little bit about how we use at-risk funding at the secondary level. The first graph on the left shows a distribution of secondary student enrollment. You'll note that high schools have 67% of secondary students. Thirty-two percent are in the seventh and eighth grade. One percent are at Tinkham. The graph to the right shows a distribution of secondary at-risk funding, with 19% going to our middle schools and 28% to our high schools. And those are primarily for foundations classes. But 53% of that money goes to the Tinkham Alternative Program. So there you go. Our excess operating costs are paid for by the general fund balance and 31A at-risk money, neither of which is growing. We know that we use our general fund balance to provide sufficient cash flow, cash flow for daily financial needs. We secure and maintain investment-grade bond ratings. We secure and maintain investment-grade bond ratings, offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfalls, and provide funds for unforeseen expenditures related to emergencies. Quite honestly, we can't continue to use it for a structural deficit that's created by the Tinkham program. So our future funding realities. State legislation may force us to reallocate at-risk funding to other initiatives. We've heard enough about third grade reading. That could be something that would take even more of our 31A or at-risk money and spread it over other initiatives and not where we want to put it. It'll offset the general fund no longer. We'll be available at the current levels. We've had those conversations all along. We're struggling to keep it where it's at. Program operation then must be designed to be funded by the basic foundation allowance, which is currently $7,251. So now what? Well, this team of experts was put together along with central office administrators, including the three assistant superintendents. We started to meet in November 2014. Those people included these teachers and support staff, building administrators, central office administrators, and union leadership joined us in those meetings. Our committee work included, as you have seen, financial analysis of the program, research of state and national alternative programming models, and this group of people did site visits to local best practice programs. Probably the most important part of where we're going was because of their skills and connecting with children, they needed to tell us what program would best work for them and for the kids that we're going to end up serving. So we did some subgroup analysis meetings and then whole group share out to determine what we wanted to do. Our recommendations then are that we serve 16- to 19-year-old high school completers, those 18% of our kids that are opting out of traditional programming. That we focus on credit recovery. We market Tinkham as a school of choice with student recruitment. We rebrand the school. We expand program to serve over 200 students with optimal class sizes for learning. We potentially blend that with online learning, and we become financially self-sufficient through the foundation allowance. The program simply must reduce costs to operate the program and increase revenues. Our next steps. We will define a mission and a vision and provide alternative education for non-traditional students. We're going to define staffing needs. We're going to rebrand the school, reimage it through public relations. We're going to market the program to local and surrounding communities, in particular using Section 105 School of Choice. We're going to design curriculum goals and objectives and structural programming practices and potentially include that online learning that I spoke of. We're going to define and develop operating procedures for classroom, school, and district. What we're going to do in year one, and we're talking about September of 2015. We're going to build capacity for 16, 19-year-old population and refine instructional programming practices. We're going to market, recruit, refer, and retain students. We're going to double the enrollment next fall over this year's baseline data. Going to evaluate our operating procedures for effectiveness and modify where necessary. Going to evaluate the program design and modify it as well. I will tell you that our plan is to do that three times during the year. One will be after the fall count cycle, another after the February count cycle, and then finally in the summer of 2016. In year two, we're going to perfect our marketing strategies for student recruitment and retention. We're going to maximize our operating capacity. At that point, we hope to be financially self-sustaining based on a foundation allowance per pupil and grant allocations. And then we'll continue to evaluate our procedures and effectiveness, and we'll evaluate the program design and modify where necessary. We are open to questions.
Anyone have a comment or a question at this time for Mr. Albrecht or for any of the staff?
Your presentation was absolutely wonderful. I want to thank everyone for the hard work and efforts into that. And it did answer any questions that I had, and I appreciate the hard work, and I feel it's very important for us to try to capture those students and respect and understand that they do need just alternative education resources and just keep moving forward on creating our future. Thank you.
Well said.
Well, thank you, Mr. Albrecht. I'd like to say that, you know, the money side of it, it goes without saying. You can't let 1% of the population take 53% of the funding. That just doesn't make sense. To the staff, I'd say, you know, money aside, this looks like an exciting opportunity to try some new things and maybe find something that serves kids better, and I envy you that opportunity. Thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Any last comment?
I might just have a brief comment about the cyber school, which would help save money, so I think that's a really good idea as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 220.15, additional newspaper design, excuse me, designation, The Telegram. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, per Councilman Canty's request, as well as Board Member Trustee's request, to look into The Telegram as a newspaper. We spoke to their editor and publisher, Gina Stewart. They would be very interested in supporting our communication, so if you are willing through a motion, we'd be happy to add them as one of our newspapers that we communicate with and share news releases, et cetera. There's a motion in your packet if you prefer.
I support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Walker, and I missed the second.
I support.
Okay. From Ms. Hines, excuse me. Okay, is there discussion at this time?
The Telegraph is a really good newspaper. They do a lot in the community. So Gina, she's right there. So they're pretty active, and they, you know, give a lot of information out. Then they cover certain areas that we don't really get out to, mostly Downriver as well.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Board Member Madison for bringing this, not only bringing it to our attention, but reminding us of this. And I think it's important that we include our Inkster community in all communication. Thank you.
Call a question?
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin is excused. I vote yes. And Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes. Six oh vote for the record. And 22, excuse me, 221.15, review and approval, legal firm presentation. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, thank you very much. At our January board meeting, we presented the legal firms for your approval that we have been using. Our firms included Clark Hill, Luskin Albertson, Troon Law, and Kelly Cawthorn. We had been notified by Clark Hill in late June of 2014 that their rates would be increased by end January. The other firms' rates remained as they had been. Through a four-to-three vote, you did not approve our proposal at the last meeting, and you extended our use of the current firms for one month while we discussed pricing and services with each firm. Through those discussions, all of the firms have agreed to maintain their 2014 rates for the 2015 year. While firms were willing to discuss a January-to-January rate review cycle, as you had requested we talk to them, we as the administration do not recommend this, as July-to-July better informs our budget development process. We will need to coordinate this information with our firms and with you for the organizational meeting we hold in January, and all of the firms are willing to work with us on this particular issue. In regards to service, your memorandum and the board packet outlines our recommendation for each firm's services. We are making this recommendation because each firm is a quality firm and each has individual attorneys with expertise that will serve us well. Rather than having a singular firm and expecting that firm to handle all of our cases, especially in a district this size, we believe it is best to use multiple firms and to select the firm and attorney based on the particular case we happen to be dealing with. For example, a particular attorney may be more effective and efficient with a particular student matter than another attorney. If we have options, we will select the attorney we believe to be most effective as well as cost-effective. Selecting the attorney with just the least expensive hourly rate may actually end up costing us more if that particular attorney is not as efficient in that particular area. As an administrative team, we recognize the need to ensure both effectiveness and efficient legal services. Additionally, all of our firms know that we use multiple firms, and each one is just one firm among the group. Having those multiple firms at our disposal functions as a check and balance for cost containment. In other words, they all want to continue to do business with us, and they are concerned that we be satisfied with both their services and their fees. The recommendation that we're putting forward this month is in your packet.
I move that we support the recommendation.
Support.
Motion from Mrs. Walker, second from Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
I would like to say that I appreciate that you did take the time to put so much effort into it, and it was very thorough. And I do like the idea that the administration is going to have the flexibility in each of their expertise and departments to be able to float between the attorneys and what is best for whatever situation that they're currently at hand with.
Thank you.
One point of clarification. The length of the service contract with each of the law firms, does that have any impact on our vote tonight, or is this just an administrative decision?
Administrative, and there is not a written contract with each firm. We communicate with them regularly. We just do a review of pricing on an annual basis. So we could stop using any firm tomorrow, as long as a case was finished. You wouldn't want to trade cases, but, so there's not a long-term contract with each firm.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment or a question? Call a question, please.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin is excused. Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes. I hear a six oh vote for the record. Motion is approved. And that brings us to 222.15, superintendent's report. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, I'll be very brief tonight. I only have two items for you. First, the superintendent steering committee has been identified, and those who applied and were selected have been notified, as well as those who applied but were not selected. I want to thank everybody who sent in applications and demonstrated their willingness to serve our district, and our first meeting will be held in early March. Second, the new legislature has begun their work, and they are quickly beginning to address education once again. I'll be watching them closely and responding to their bills as they come forward. We are expecting to hear from the governor this week in regards to his proposed budget, and the release of this information will help us to start the development of our 15-16 budget process. So we'll keep you posted on that. And March 3rd is a legislative conference through MASB. If any of you are interested in learning more, please let Jan or myself know. And those of you who are signed up, it'll be great to attend with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Item 223.15, Board of Education Committee reports. I don't believe we have a policy committee report this evening. Am I correct?
Correct.
We do have, from Finance. Mrs. Walker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. I have the minutes for the Finance Subcommittee meeting, which met on February 3rd, 2015. Members present: Dr. Harmala, Dr. Weaver, Mr. Buckaloo, he was subbing for Mr. Griffin, John Albright, Kelly Bowles, Jim Larson Schidler, and myself. Trav Griffin was excused. The following is a summary of our discussion. Item number one, Vandenberg Lease Agreement. At the December 8th, 2014, board meeting, a short-term lease of Vandenberg to the City of Wayne was discussed. Board Resolution 181.15C granted authority to the superintendent for her designated to negotiate a lease with the City of Wayne. The lease will provide the City of Wayne office space while repairs to the City Hall are completed. The District and City of Wayne have agreed to lease terms for the period of April 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2015. The lease agreement is for $23,034, which includes actual costs for the legal review and building insurance and estimated costs for utilities. Additionally, if the District occurs added cost to demo, Vandenberg, cost to demo, Vandenberg due to the contract delay on September 2015, the City of Wayne will reimburse amounts over the approved contract of $119,598.90. The other terms of note include: The city will provide custodial services and assurances for personal property and general liability. The lease will be provided to the board in the Friday's board update packet. Item number two, Law Firm Review. Resolution 201.15, Legal Firm Representation was not approved by the board at the January 12th, 2015 meeting. To provide legal representation until its September 9th meeting, the board passed a temporary resolution authorizing administration to use Clark Hill, Luskin Albertson, Thurn Law Firm, and Kelly Cawthorn. Dr. Harmala contacted and requested information from Clark Hill, Luskin Albertson, and Thurn Law Firm to provide the board information of rates and services provided by the legal firms. The committee discussed the comparisons and how hard it is to quantify differences. Comparisons are very subjective due to each case being unique. Kelly Cawthorn provides governmental and legislative services, and their fees have remained the same since 2002. The committee asks administration for a memo summarizing the information received from the legal firms, which will be included in your February 9th, 2015 board meeting packets. A resolution will be presented at the Board of Education recommending approval of law firms at the regular meeting, which was held tonight, February 9th, 2015. Item number three, Tinkham Alternative Education Program. Mr. Albright presented and reviewed information regarding the redesign of the Tinkham Alternative Education Program. The current design of the program is being heavily subsidized by the general fund and at-risk funds. Funding of the program as it is currently designed cannot be sustained. Tinkham staff, union representatives, and administration have been meeting since November 2014 to discuss the options to help Tinkham become self-supporting. Staff visit alternative programs in the area to compare and gain information of other programs. A two-year plan to redesign the district's alternative education program was developed. The redesign will be evaluated and monitored through the implementation. Committee members asked for clarification of the current program design and how the redesign will operate on the timeline. A presentation will be made to the entire Board of Education at the regular meeting on February 9th, 2015. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 224.15, citizen comments, non-agenda items. Mrs. Madell? Okay, is there anyone wishing to make a comment this evening?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gina Wilson Stewart. I am the publisher of The Telegram Newspaper. You guys just graciously voted as one of your new newspapers of record. I thank you for your support. Just a little history, so some of you guys may not know, The Telegram has been published since 1944, over 70 years. Started in the City of Ecorus, and we moved out to the Wayne-Westland area over eight years ago, when I became the publisher. I started off, I'm an engineer by degree, graduated from River Rouge High School, but, you know, I love Downriver, and that's kind of what we focused our expansion to. We have been covering all the local cities. We are the official newspaper for the City of River Rouge, Ecorus, Inkster, as well as the City of Romulus. So this is nothing new to us. I wanted to let you guys know that we are able and willing to do a good job to represent the school. We also have journalism internship programs for the students, so if they wanted to get some experience writing in a newspaper and on our website, they definitely can do that. And I would just... And I would just need to get in contact with the English teachers so that we can set that up. But it is a great opportunity for the students to be able to get a taste and a feel for journalism and interviewing. You never know who's going to walk into the Telegram newspaper office. We get to see everybody since we've been doing this for such a long time. It's a great way that they can just meet different people and then cover different events. And of course, you know, you get media passes, and you get to go to all the fun stuff. So we also, if you have a performing arts program, we partner with Wayne State and University of Drake Mercy's Performing Arts Program, and we're allowed to get the tickets and then get the tickets to the students, so the students can actually go see the college students perform at the place. So those are so many things that we will be willing to partner with you guys on. So again, I just wanted to thank you, and our job at The Telegram is to help to get the story out. That's what we do. We tell the story to the world, because we're online. Telegramnews.net is our website, so as you know, if it happens and is on the internet, everybody knows about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Item 225.15, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. Why don't we start with Ms. Walker, please?
Thank you. No comments this evening.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Tricia Tron and Caleb Jovanovic for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Also, congratulations to our very talented students that participated tonight and did these wonderful presentations, and also for our kids, and I was touched tonight by our kids that participate in our community and doing things for our community members and helping out. I'm also thankful that we've included, as I've said, The Telegram Newspaper from taking care of the Inkster area and keeping the community involved with our district, so thank you for that. And I appreciate the Tinkham Education Program presentation this evening. It was a wonderful presentation, and I'm thankful that we have the kind of administrators and teachers in our district that can see things coming before they get critical and are able to get ahead of things, so I really appreciate this presentation. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, sir. And Mrs. Madison?
I too agree with Dr. Weaver on the process in your presentation, and I too want to tell you how much I do appreciate not only the foresight thinking into it, but the understanding of the value and how important it is for us to try to keep that program going. And I'm very excited to see what flourishes, because I know it will be very good. Also, Mr. Kay's already left. He's created an exceptional culture over at Career Tech, and my children have experienced firsthand the culture over there, and I'm very proud that we also have that going for us and all of the exceptional awards that we get to see here tonight, just to name a few of them that we get to see. And I'd like to see for us to be able to have the graphic design department maybe upgrade the scene for us here. Just a thought I would like to put out there. And that's about all tonight.
Maybe I could finally look like Cindy Crawford, for sure.
Mrs. Hines, please. Ms. Hines?
Hello. I'd like to say last week I was able to attend the award ceremony at Marshall Upper Elementary. It was pretty exciting. I was able to go see Annie at Wayne Memorial Saturday. Tomorrow, I got invited to the Champions of Wayne program. Pretty excited about that. And there's another program, they're having, because I do a lot with different communities, and they're having the Inkster Literacy Movement Group, and they're having an event, like a literacy event, February 27th at Starfish Family Services. So I like to kind of be in the community, meet the parents, talk to everybody, and like to be pretty active, so I'm pretty excited the next couple of weeks. And this Saturday, I'll be up in Cobol representing Wayne Westland School Birthday Convention.
Thank you. Mrs. Madell?
As always, in front of you is the monthly expense report for the Head Start Program, which is required by federal government, that you take a look at it and hopefully understand. If you have any questions, please call Mrs. Kajawa over at the Head Start Program at Stottlemyer. I understand that they are fully enrolled right now, but they're always taking names for the waiting list that they have, because openings do occur from time to time when families move out or their needs change, so we always need to have at least 10 students on a waiting list for that program so that as soon as a vacancy is available, we can push in a student to that program. I want to thank all of you for coming out on an off-scheduled meeting for a special meeting for the approval of the reauthorization of the Head Start Program, knowing that the paperwork is due for not this school year, but for next school year, and the paperwork's already due. So thank you very much to each of you who cleared time in your schedule to attend that meeting. I want to thank our contest winners. Every year, they outdo each other. Each year, they come with different projects and graphics, and I'm astonished at the quality of student work, knowing that I don't remember this kind of quality when I went to high school. So, you know, we're doing a fabulous job with our students, and they are showing us what they have learned, and it's wonderful. The volunteerism that our students are learning that is important in our community, I am very impressed with the number of students who have participated in community programs and participate on a regular basis in volunteering in our community. This is a lesson that everybody needs to learn in life, is how to be a good volunteer, to bring what skills and talents you have to the world, and it doesn't always mean that you need to wait to be an adult in order to do that. So to all of our students who are volunteers out in the community, congratulations and keep up the good work. I want to welcome our new newspaper to our district. Thank you. We welcome you with open arms. Today was the first chance I got a chance to even see the newspaper. I went to coffee with our state representative, county representatives, at Inkster Library, public library there, and I got a chance to see it, so now I look forward to seeing something about Wayne Westland Community School District in there, whether it's an advertisement or just an article about something great that's going on in the school district, because I do tell everybody each month about all the wonderful things that we have going on in our district. So welcome aboard. Look forward to seeing you. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. So as I look forward on the wall behind us, I see the presentation that was made by our students to the board last month. Thanks, and I would turn that around and say, "Thank you, students, because of what you do to make Wayne Westland such an important..."